Thank you, thank you. Do you need an agenda?
Yeah, because I'm not suited up yet. Oh, here we go.
Yeah, right here.
All right, is there a motion? Uh, going for the session? I have that motion.
You have to leave it, right?
Yeah, I got the motion. I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purposes. Discuss and consider the appointments of classified staff with the positions of coaching and substitutes, reduction in force for FY eighteen, classified full-time car driving positions, professional appointments of interim superintendent and contracts of current superintendent, and interim superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one 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 A and one point two personnel matters not related to public business pursuant to Virginia Code section two point two dash three seven one one A four.
Second. We have a motion from Ms. Johnson, second from Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And closed session. We've just come out in closed session, but we recessed, we're gonna be going back into closed session after conclusion of our meeting tonight. While we're in closed session, we did have discussion regarding the appointment of interim superintendent. So we have a motion at this time?
I made a motion that Dr. Blair, we appointed as interim superintendent effective February twenty seventh through June thirty twenty seventh. How's that, Mary?
We have a motion and a second. A motion. Ms. Johnson. And did it say, or did it say roll call or not? They did say roll call. We have a roll call vote on the agenda. Yeah, we can't certify until, we can't certify until our closed session is actually closed. We just recessed. Does it make sense? Is everybody okay? Yeah. We're, we're gonna have this motion, we will continue closed session after we're done with our marathon. And, uh, but right now, before the pledge, we have to conclude this particular, uh, vote. So roll call vote? Questionnaire is aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Before I do the pledge, I tell you, I would like to just share with you really quick. So, Dr. Blair, I'm gonna try to sum up forty years in thirty seconds. Uh, Dr. Blair is, is, uh, I can't even, I couldn't even count this number, I'm trying to put it together, and it's over forty years in education. Uh, as a teacher, a principal, assistant superintendent in Paltown for six years, superintendent of Paltown County, three years, superintendent of Buckingham County, four years, retired. And he's been with us for two years. And, uh, so it's our pleasure to ask him and our fortune to ask him to be our interim superintendent. He signed the documents, so it's official, uh, he's ours, and, uh, until we find our next superintendent. Dr. Blair, you want to share? Surprise.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Boyd, thank for rescuing me from taking another toilet and making the dogs getting out of the house. As interim superintendent, I'm gonna work on two things to preserve and enhance our work to preserve what works well and enhance our continued journey into excellence. I believe in the value of teamwork. In the words of Henry Ford, coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. So whenever you have a different superintendent, you have to work on getting people together and keeping them together, I can't do that. With a positive team spirit, leadership that is founded with integrity, trust, and a passion for the success of our students, this is a great sense of pride and humility, uh, that I become the interim superintendent, and I thank all of you.
So rise and stare up. Here we go. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This call for a moment. I know we wanted to get a picture. We need to get her back. Sure. Do you have camera?
I did.
Right. Ex post back though. What do you think? This is good? You want this, you want? This portion of the meeting is open to public. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for our students. The board does not, uh, does want to hear from members of the public, however, comments have been limited about equity. To all speakers, to ensure that the meeting is reasonable in length, it's been brought to the attention of the board from concern constituents that even though we've asked speakers to limit their comments to three minutes, this has not been effective. We will therefore ask that all comments from this point forward be respectful of the time limit. If you have more information than can be delivered in three minutes, please provide, leave behind materials for the board, Ms. Rogers, clerk of the board, who'll be timekeeper. I will let the moderator know when comments are reaching or have exceeded the limit. If you have questions during the session, you may ask a representative or a school administrator for clarification after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion concerning the adoption of tonight's agenda? Second, a motion from, we have a motion from, uh, Mr. Grove, a second from Ms. Grove, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. We have a trouble hearing?
No, sir, some requests on the agenda. If it's possible, on exception five of the special surplus cards, if that's possible, we'll give it to act in public comment time.
The, um, the, the decision on the surplus cards doesn't come until after public comment. So there is a section where we actually take the motions, the action items, is eight dot three. So we will have time for public comment before any action is taken. I'm just gonna have to get a bigger cloth. I have this tiny little screen. Report from the student representative.
All right. So, uh, winter sports are almost, okay. Well, winter sports are almost wrapped up at this time. Um, school ball, or the Scholastic Bowl still has to compete this Saturday in the state tournament, and that's gonna be in Williamsburg. But varsity wrestling just finished their state competition, and they came home fourth place as a team with one new state champion, and that is Chris Gordon. Uh, they also have seven state placers on their team this year, and the big thanks goes to RCSA for funding the charter bus that took them to states, as well as the one that's going to take the Scholastic Bowl to states. Um, basketball, girls' basketball, advanced to the second round of the conference tournament and placed two players on the all district team, as well as three players on the all conference team. Uh, boys' basketball, their season ended with a first-round playoff loss. In terms of junior varsity, uh, both of those teams ended with a very good record. Um, they had at or above five hundred seasons, both girls and boys. Um, in terms of middle school, the JP Boys, uh, won their championship team, uh, and the girls finished as their tournament winner. The winter sports celebration is going to be held on March sixth, and that's going to be at six thirty PM in the high school auditorium. Spring sports tryouts started this past Monday, so everyone's excited about those. Uh, Rappahannock plans to field teams in girls' and boys' soccer, as well as baseball, softball, and girls' and boys' crack. Um, in terms of our schoolwork, we just concluded our first round of benchmark testing for our semester classes, and Mr. Sweller and Mr. Tucker report very encouraging scores on those tests. Um, after-school tutoring started today as well, and it's going to continue every Tuesday and Thursday, um, from November to April. A lot of them with a greater appreciation of all of the things that their parents are currently paying for. So, that should be helpful to them. Um, also last week, the band hosted a very successful mini golf event, that was on Saturday, and band director, Mr. Kiara, says he was very happy with the crowd and the results of the fundraiser. He said that everyone involved had a wonderful time. The next band event is going to be the annual coffee house in March, and that's going to be on Friday, March twenty fourth, uh, at the old gym in the elementary school. And that event is sure to bring good food and even better music, and it's sure to be a lot of fun. Um, our flex classes are working on our commuting service projects. We're gonna wrap that up with the flex fair that is scheduled on March twenty seventh and twenty eighth in the high school gym. Uh, we're all excited to present our flex class projects and show our peers and the public the constructive work that we've done this year. Um, and while most of these seem to be a little ways off, we're already hard at work preparing for the prom and for the spring musical, which is School of Rock. Prom is going to be held this year on Saturday, April eighth, in the auxiliary gym, with after-prom activities scheduled at the high school until the wee hours of Sunday morning. And the spring musical is at the end of April with, uh, matinee performance on Sunday, April thirtieth, as well as two on that Saturday, April twenty ninth. Uh, Mr. Paulette and his drum crew are working very hard on these musical, the props, um, all the songs for that, and they're very excited to showcase all of the talent that we have at the school. That's why I have three checks.
Any questions?
I, I, I would like to say that the, uh, the event of the eighth grade was fabulous last Wednesday, uh, wasn't it Wednesday? I lose track of the day. But I, I, and I spent, spent the whole time there giving out, or selling cell phones. That was my, uh, that was your job. And most kids bought the cheapest cellphone because they found out it cost a lot to raise children. But it was, uh, it was extremely well done, and, and the, the students were fabulous. I mean, they really took it seriously. Uh, I, I saw one kid with some tears in her eyes because she, she, she had to get a house with another bedroom. Too many kids for the bedroom. Anyway, she had to turn in her big cellphone to go get a house.
That's why they call it reality.
That's right. But it was, it was well done, and, and I, I just applaud the, the teachers in the grade eight.
Uh, we have a CTE month?
Yes, and we bring this up in the agenda a little bit. Uh, if this, uh, person that comes to the party, uh, is friendly, along with the many, many hats that she has, also coordinates a CTE program. And so she's gonna share some stuff with her, with us, and, and Mr. Tucker and, um, Mr. Sweller, Michael, and us as well, as part of the, um, hospital administration that supports our CTE program. And I hope we have, we have some presentations.
Yes. Okay, um, career and tech, we just love our career and tech program here at Rappahannock. Um, it's just such a, a great way where we have the opportunity to provide additional experiences for our children. It's where we see gifts and talents being nurtured in so many different ways, and we get to help prepare students for what comes next after high school and, and the things that they will be doing in reality, like we've been talking about, which is just, it's just really great. And, um, for a little school, I think we do quite a lot, and we're always working on ways to expand those career and tech offerings. And it's just so great to see that our comprehensive plan is now aligned to that because the state has aligned to things that we've already been doing for such a long time with the career prep, so we're really excited about that. Um, so we thought, what better way to showcase, um, our career and tech program than, I mean, what better measure i- is the program than the outcome, which is what the students are doing. Uh, so we did invite some students here tonight. Uh, we have, uh, Virginia Wyatt here, who's gonna give a little presentation. She's wearing her Skills USA jacket, if you noticed that, reigning state champion for prepared speech. Um, and she really just found quite a, a lot of her, her talents in career, career tech and business and prepared speech, so we'd like for her to share some of her students. Um, do you guys wanna add anything to that?
I'll just add, we, we had three students scheduled to be here. Um, one who was the second-place finisher in the competition for welding, um, who I did speak with this afternoon and had planned to be here to show all some of his work. I haven't seen him yet. I will say that he works for my father-in-law, and it wouldn't surprise me if my father-in-law still got a wedding right now. I hope that's not the case, I would be very upset if he was. Uh, and the other was, uh, Dina Abdullah, who finished, uh, second in two competitions, culinary competitions, one being baking and one being prepared food. And, uh, and I, that one really disappointed me because she was supposed to bring some bread tonight. I've had some of her bread, and I'm telling you, it's good. However, I'm thrilled to know, to have you here, um, Ms. Virginia Wyatt, who is going to practice, uh, the public speaking skills that has served her so well, um, in discussing with you some of the elements of a project she's working on, uh, with one of her classes at Mountain Vista Governor's School, so which is kinda neat, tying in CTE and Governor's School at the same time. So, is that okay? I've turned it over to Virginia. Come on back up.
Um, my head is blurred. I don't, it's not really set up for a large group presentation, but we can turn to our hands. If you wanna look at exclusive later, just really appreciate the information that's on it, um, you can do that. But, um, this is something that I've been working on for a while. With Governor's School, it's not really associated with one class, but we do, um, I, I get to apply my statistics information, as well as some of the things that I'm learning in psychology, uh, to do this independent research project. And I presented that project on this past Friday at the science fair for Governor's School. Um, so my project was on the use of emotions in political advertisement, because obviously this past election was pretty controversial, and I had been hearing a lot of things on both sides about a lot of the negative advertisement that was done and the very emotional things that were said on Twitter. So, I wanted to see if these allegations had any basis in fact. So, I came up with a way to test that by, um, finding a word list that, um, it lists the emotional associations of different words, and so that's called the NRC Word Emotion Association Lexicon, which is a list of over fourteen thousand words, and so it attributes each of them either a positive or a negative value. And so what I did was, I collected thirty tweets of each candidate and used the transcripts of the more traditional video advertisements to compare them against, and I took each word and I checked it against this word list that I had to see whether it was positive or negative. And from that, I gathered which candidate was maybe more positive on one platform and more negative on another platform. And so, as you can see from my overall graph here, um, all of the association values were actually positive overall, so I didn't have any platform or candidate that was more negative than they were positive. Within those four conditions, I found that Hillary Clinton's videos were the most negative of the four, and, uh, Donald Trump's videos are the most positive, with both of the Twitter conditions sort of falling in the middle between those two extremes. So for the tweets, Hillary Clinton's were more positive than Donald Trump's. And, so I found it interesting that on one platform Hillary Clinton was more positive, but on the others she was less positive. Um, but even out of all of those results, they, they were interesting, but the biggest thing I found in this project was how much room there is to expand in this field, because scientifically speaking, social media is a very new construct, and so there's a lot of territory that we still have to cover and quantify. And so, um, that was the most exciting thing for me, was to be able to take something that's been around for a long time, this political advertisement, and the analysis of emotional use in it, and then combine it with a totally new field in social media. So I look forward to all of the places that we might go in our study of this technology, through psychology, sociology, economics, linguistics, and so much more. It's just a lot of room for possibility, and I'm excited for that. Thank you.
You know, give Virginia, you've done an unemotional assessment of emotional topic.
I, I thought that was really the only way to get it done.
I'd say, great job presenting.
Thank you.
I'm gonna say that America's in pretty good shape. We've got students like Virginia coming along, and, um, I think all she has to do now is her dissertation has begun. Right on target.
Well, it's true, Mike. I mean, it's, you start to see that type of quality, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, Virginia reads probably five or six books a week. Am I correct? I mean, I knew if you done it.
Well, I have time.
She has time. And if you ever wanna ask her a question on what she's reading, she's gonna give you the best book report you've ever heard. Uh, she's an amazing student. But I have to say that Virginia's like many, we got, you know, in Virginia, I can always speak to Virginia, uh, we have so many students out there that are like Virginia. So, I always like to think, you know, we're in good shape, country's in good shape, schools are doing a good job, and, and we depend on you to, to help us, you know, overcome some of these issues that we have.
She's doing an excellent job.
And speaking of good shape, she was also a member of our state championship volleyball team.
Yes, yes.
Probably took away from her time to read.
It probably did, yeah.
Readers are readers.
Much, much pride. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on, donations?
I have several donations to report. Rappahannock Electric donated two hundred dollars for the after-party party. The Barley donated a hundred dollars for the after-party party. The United Dollar and Thomas donated two hundred fifty dollars for the after-party party. The PTO donated nine hundred dollars for the after-party party. Postman Corporation donated a hundred dollars for the same thing. Country Chevrolet, five hundred dollars. And the Rappahannock County Lions Club donated five hundred fifty dollars for the after-party party. And the last donation is from the PTO, two hundred dollars in this state for the Blue Rock Conference Series, and I sound out of somebody at the comments.
And we will adopt, uh, accept the donations in thanks during our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from the January tenth school board meeting and the January seventeenth work session? We have a motion from, uh, Mr. Grove, a second from Ms. Johnson, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. So order, uh, Ms. Johnson, did you, we paid the bills early this morning. All right, is there a motion concerning the approval of the consent agenda, which includes donations, warrants, the personnel report as modified or amended? Uh, the homeschool student report and the 4H plus usage request. There are a motion from Ms. Johnson, is her second. Mr. Rubin is the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. And so order recognition, school board appreciation month, and clerk and deputy clerk appreciation week. You only get a week?
So, um, I'm going to go up your mic in just a minute, but I do want to let the board know that we have some cake over there that has not been cut yet, that needs to be cut in just a minute. And in the same process that y'all always do, what you receive yours of the one in the audience, we'd like to receive cake as well. But, um, the Junior School Board Association does recognize school boards. Um, they're an organization that supports school boards. They have the legal, um, expertise in the background, they do a lot of policy, they keep up with the changes, um, in our legislature, and they keep the school board in such detail. It's going, uh, sending a, a daily announcement to them, and they also send some little things, and also spots at our conferences. One of the big things that they do is the month of February in recognizing our school board, uh, members as our leaders in the community. And so in honor of that, uh, they can send us some certificates. And, uh, if y'all could wallpaper your home, pretty simple, these certificates before, y'all are always so active. But as I read your name, if you'll please come forward and, um, accept your certificate. I'm Mr. Larry Grove. And the certificate say, um, certificate of recognition and appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School board appreciation month, February two thousand seventeen, B S D A. And are you getting picked? Don't get me, I am just still so sad. Please don't get me picked. It's a really bad hair day. Oh, there's Johnson. Okay, wait, sorry. Actually, watching the lower one, the thing is.
You can get that mic.
Yeah. They're like, what a massage.
You shouldn't do this very often.
That is true.
What you see in front of you is a gift, uh, from, uh, from career and tech, uh, class, actually Scott's sponsor. He just, he does a lot of lathe work, and, uh, these are sweetened made pins. This is a pecan wood, and, uh, and Scott is amazing, cause he, he does this all the different things that he, and, and everything to him is like, you know, it's not that big of a, everything I've ever seen him do is absolutely amazing. And it never fails, everything he does, and he's teaching kids, this is why I'm bringing this up, um, it's, it's a lot of math involved in what he does, a lot of math, and, um, kids are doing that along with learning how to make a bowl or a pin. It seems like a fairly easy thing to do, but it actually takes a lot of skill and patience. As those of us know that, uh, who've done any kind of construction or building anything, the key is you gotta be patient, because if, if you're not patient, you're gonna end up building something that's not, that's not good. So, uh, anyway, they, they wanted you to have these pins, and I hope that you can, uh, share with, uh, whoever you ask you about them, and it is a Rappahannock made them, and we're. And we're trying to, I'm going to pass this around so you can see it, but I hope it not be in the back.
So, Virginia, thank you for the word. We very much appreciate what you do for us. The students appreciate seeing you at May concert, and for events, and all the places they can show up. You have in your envelope cards, some of them are personalized to you, and some of the students may not necessarily know your name, but they did when they made the card. And for some of you, yours are favorites, and I wear these cards, so they think you're my favorite. So, but our students, they do appreciate you. We have some pre-K, the infants have them for a pre-K class, as you know. Year three of our pre-K, right? So this is Tiffany Montevue, some of you know her, Cindy Keating. And then our kindergarten class, they've all signed a big card for you. But we just want you to know that we do appreciate it, we love when we see your faces and you show up at our events, so thank you.
We also have something for our clerks, and I'll ask Mr. Mills to do this. It's worth that particularly. They have the certificate, but they also have a card with a small card inside. And we just thank our clerk and our deputy clerk for everything that they do. They put together the whole meeting, all the information that we're sending them, put it up in board documents, and have it there. The next person is Donna Oliver. And, you know, Donna Oliver, I mean, y'all hear me bragging any other time, because I couldn't do anything without her. Donna Oliver is over at the school, still doing things, and I can go in there when we need her. And it's the best I've ever seen of giving this on a chalkboard, and it always works, it's just wonderful. So, Mr. Mills, I'll give that to you now. Thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, sir, shall we do that? And then you will start cutting the cake.
It worked while he was cutting cake for everybody. Dr. Matthews has been with us for four years. Four years. And so, before she leaves, she's going on to pursue a career at DOE in Richmond, and has served us faithfully for tenure, and so we have something for you as well.
It's not another school board agenda.
It's a policy. Next year's budget, we're working on it.
It's really happening.
Fucking hell. I was talking about it, the talented slasher crew.
This is what he does, and this is gorgeous.
And then on the back, I know, Sue, one of my goals is to make her cry for her money. Thank you. Am I succeeding yet? Thank you, Dr. Donna Matthews, superintendent, Rappahannock County Public Schools, Washington, Virginia, 7-1, 2013, 3-9, 2017. And then down here, we made it right its name. Beautiful? It's all enough, and, like.
But I'm just hoping for something. You know, when I got here, there was terrific staff here, and people were willing to work really hard. We just needed a direction to go academically, and it was hard, hard work. But when you put you up in the first, it's always going to be hard. But I have met some of the best people I have ever known in the school system, and I love them dearly, and they know who they are, and so now I can just enjoy my granddaddy and hopefully leave work at four o'clock, and be home with the cows and all that good stuff. And I'm really excited, but Rappahannock is always going to be hard. Appreciate you for, thank you so much for the opportunity. You gave me a chance, and I was an absolute rookie, and I let everybody know it, because I didn't want them to be saying it when I knew what it was too. But I could not be happier that Dr. Blair is going to step in and go from there until the end of the year, and continue what we're doing, just so great. When I look at people like Virginia that can get up here and do what she does, and give me the hugs in the hallway, is when I see her. I mean, that's what it's all about. And he's the whole pre-K imprint. But you supported me in, on my job interview, when I said you need a pre-K program, and y'all went ahead and we made it happen, and it has been just phenomenal, so thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Now, y'all need a K, because I'm going to get a little skinny at the O E, and not stress of anything. Hey, if you can help me forward, do y'all want to cut the cake or not?
I heard you got cake up here, so if you guys want to take.
And we need a chocolate for Ms. Johnson.
Just pass it to me, the crowd, that's all right? You guys, okay with that? Come up, get it, or there'll be 30 seconds of chaos.
You have to cut yourself a bigger piece of it.
Right? Cherry, okay. Cherry, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to move on to seeing the calendars.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we typically do the calendar about this time of year, sometimes a month sooner, but with so much going on, it took a little bit more time. And Ms. Johnson's been working on this with the staff every year since my first year, and she meets with them and goes over their ideas. I'm sure that you've had time to see it, it's the motherboard package, but she has two calendars, and then she has the one that Bud runs. I'm going to turn it over to you, Ms. Johnson, or not you?
Just want to get my piece of paper in a minute. So, hopefully, the calendar is going to be one of those issues that's not emotional this evening. I do take pride in working on the calendar every year. It may seem like a small task, but I really do feel like Rappahannock County has been a leader over the course of the last few years with the neighboring districts and the calendar. We moved several years ago to an earlier start to the school year. Other school divisions have followed suit since Rappahannock County has done that. I know that Culpeper actually started earlier than us this past year. So, again, I take pride in the fact that I feel like we've been a leader in trying to get the calendar the first semester done before the Christmas break. When you're considering a calendar, it's somewhat similar to considering a budget, because you have lots of competing interests vying for limited resources. The goal of the calendar committee, however, is first and foremost to ensure that we have quality instruction for our students, while addressing as many of those competing interests as possible. And I feel like our calendar committee that we put together this year did a good job at keeping all of those different pieces of the process in mind. And Robyn, you can go ahead to the next one. Per board policy, ICID, a committee was formed to consider the strengths and weaknesses of the current calendar model that we have. A calendar committee composed of a central office staff member, two principals, three teachers, three support staff, and one parent, was assembled to discuss a draft calendar that was based on the current year's model. We followed previous directions to include 90 days of instruction for each semester, and we reviewed building in eight snow days or implement weather days. So suggested improvements over this year's calendar included providing more time for professional development, adding more days for the spring break, considering 11 o'clock early release days versus the 12:30 release that we have this year, more time to prepare for graduation, and having dedicated workdays. So if you go to the next slide with the proposed calendars compared, we did a Survey Monkey, and we sent out a Calendar A and a Calendar B for the staff to look at. Both calendars were very similar. They each began with a return date for staff on August the 2nd. First day for students was August 15, which is a Thursday. Both calendars had five 12 o'clock release days, and each calendar featured two and a half professional development days and one full day, which was more than this year's calendar had. Each calendar also had nine days for the winter break. Where the calendars differed, Calendar A had three days for the spring break in addition to the weekend, and the Calendar B had six days, so that was more of a traditional spring break. In Calendar A, the last day of school and graduation were on May the 25th, which is right before the Memorial Day holiday. In Calendar B, the last day for students was May the 31st, and then graduation would move to June the 1st. So there was a day in between for staff to prepare for graduation. So once all of the results were tabulated, for Calendar A, we had 35 votes, Calendar B had 66 votes, and we had a total of 101 people who responded to the survey, indicating that they preferred Calendar B. We did have an area where staff could submit written comments in regard to the calendar proposals. We had a total of 18 comments that were written in, and I kind of looked through those for, you know, the different themes that might arise from the comments, and I came up with three overall themes. We had four people who asked questions, basically to clarify the calendar. Unlike Virginia, who's so good at statistics, I only was up to third grade, so I apparently can't count to 97 or 98 sometimes, so there was some clarity. Four people asked questions regarding clarity. Four people asked questions regarding the need for built-in snow days, and four people commented on the positive nature of having a spring break added into the calendar. One thing I would point out is that this year's calendar had 98 days in the second semester, 90 days for instruction, and eight days that were built in as implement weather days. This, the calendar that's proposed for next year has seven implement weather days, so we did reduce by one in that calendar, so that we could add a full day for professional development in February versus a half day to meet the need that the staff felt that we had in the professional development area. This year, we look to be having a mild winter, so, you know, lots of people don't seek the need for the built-in snow days. Next year is another roll of the dice, so, you know, we follow the board's direction to keep the built-in snow days in the calendar. Recommendations, therefore, are for Calendar B, to include seven implement days this year rather than the eight. For the early release days, we had talked about the possibility of an 11 o'clock release. We eventually went with a 12 o'clock release in Calendar B, mainly because of concerns about student attendance and being able to get the revenue that we wanted to get from the cafeteria on those early release days. When we talked about 11 o'clock release days, the calendar committee had some really great ideas about how we could be innovative with that 11 o'clock release. We had cafeteria staff members on the committee that we discussed the possibility of piloting a brunch, so that the students would kind of have a lunch-breakfast combined in the morning, and we would keep our cafeteria revenues up by piloting something different that might pique the students' interest. So we are recommending that we go ahead and try that this coming year with the 12 o'clock release days, as well as incentives to promote student attendance on those days. It's really easy, especially when you're in high school, if it's early release, to think that that might be a good day to stay home. So maybe planning some of our special programs, the Reality Store-type programs, the groups that come in to give theater presentations, to plan those for our early release days, so that students would be more motivated to come. And then finally, to avoid scheduling mandatory activities on our January workday, that is the beginning of a new year for our high school teachers, and they were very passionate about protecting that as a dedicated workday. So in conclusion, we appreciate the continued opportunity to give input into the calendar to address not only our professional needs, but most of all, the instructional needs of Rappahannock students. And I am happy to answer any questions that the board may have in regard to the proposed calendar.
Any questions? The intent would be to, tonight, to adopt Calendar B, correct?
Correct.
Let's add a comment, because Phil and I were talking, we have, you know, ever since we went to building snow days, teachers have asked that we, you know, let them know for sure that we will take off those added days at the end. We've always done that, so I just want to make a comment again, but we've continued to tell teachers that if they don't have those snow days, I mean, their contracts are for 200 days, but it's always been 180 days of teaching, so they've only had one snow day that we've missed. So they should have some days that we change the date for the end of the year again this year, and hopefully for years to come. You know, they're going in with, this all came about, if y'all remember, in my first year, we missed 17 days of snow, and we had to do something, because you've got to get to eight before you really start doing the back time, and they just don't understand that, so that's why we put in the eight days. I just wanted to mention that we still want to guarantee our staff that they would only do 180 days, you know, and give them back those days at the end.
It's also good to note that graduation day will remain safe regardless.
Is that right? Yeah, we normally do that.
You don't want to change graduation day.
June. Oh, is it June? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Phil, I appreciate it. Then Mr. West, the school board asked that we look into the possibility of trying to do something with the county and having a combined health insurance. Ms. Witt and Mr. Hanaker looked on this. Ms. Witt is kind of like our insurance guru person, and this was really informative. So I'm going to let them go from the podium and give you an update on what would happen if we did merge the two.
I was asked to get some information in regards to county versus our insurance policy. So I called our TLC rep, and he was more than willing to pass along a lot of information to us, so. Just to give you a brief overview, if you want to go to the next slide. So currently, the school offers three plans to all their employees. We have the Key Advantage 500, Key Advantage 1000, and then the High Deductible Plan. Each one of those plans include vision and dental of some sort. The county right now offers two plans. They do a Key Advantage Expanded and a Key Advantage 250, which are on the higher end of our insurance. We kind of took mid to the lower range of the High Deductible, and they went to the top of the scale with their insurance plans. When talking to our rep, I asked him about combining our plans and what it would do, and he said, most likely, you're looking at it in a severe. If we combine the plans, we would have to choose or go to the county's two plans instead of what we have currently. As you flip to the next slide, we'll see a little bit more about that. Right now, our insurance is based on a 75% credibility rate, which means 75% of our claims affect our rates. If we join. If we join with the county, then it would increase our credibility. So we would go to eighty percent, again, making our rates go up. Our open enrollment is another issue that we would need to address. Luckily, the schools have an option of doing a July first enrollment or an October first enrollment. The county only has one option, it's July first. So that means that we would have to go to their plan. They would take over reins of the insurances as far as adding people, deleting people, making sure the things right, making sure the claims come through. So that would take a lot of stuff away from us as far as our teachers. I mean, our teachers get added October first because that's when their first insurance pay goes through. So there would be a lot of changing on that as well. And as far as the county is concerned, because they are small, they're under fifty employees. So right now, their claims don't even affect them. They're in a bigger pot of fifty and under businesses. So joining us is probably most likely going to hurt them as well as us. So I'm going to flip to my next slide. When I talked to the gentleman, he said, "I would highly advise you against it." It's going to hurt probably in both cases, both of us. And once we do it, we can't take it back. Because he said, "You're playing the game with me of where can I get better rates?" He said, "So once you decide to make the choice, you're stuck." I do have handouts for you guys so you can see the differences between all the plans and ones we offer and ones the county offers, just to give you an idea of the difference. This slide? So it says, "Does the county have the resources to manage the things over two hundred employees?" Probably not.
And I really wanted Stacy to read that because she and Gary Honaker are getting claim information all the time. And we're dealing with about two hundred employees. So the county doesn't have anybody to do that. And so I asked, "Kell, we've got, if we went together, could we not manage it?" They wouldn't allow us to do that. It has to become within the county. So all of our employees would be basically on county stuff. They'd go to county people for all the information. If there's an issue, that their claim didn't go through, too much was taken out of their check.
Their names are still on?
It's going to be just a real huge mess for our employees to do this. And so much.
And that's the thing, if we go to the Key Advantage X amount or the two fifty, our rates are going to go anywhere, because they're the more expensive plan. Not only that, at a point, they're going to be considered a Cadillac plan, which means we're going to get taxed and set fees on it under the Affordable Health Act. And I don't think that's something that any of us want to do or handle at that point. So it's just, there's a few issues, I think, that would keep us from joining with the county.
If you compare the plans, the benefit that the county has in the Cadillac plan, it's not worth the difference we have to pay for the premium.
And I'm afraid that difference, Ms. Johnson, would then be passed on to our employees.
That's right.
Because we've been able to hold pretty tight. And the higher you go with the plan, somebody's got to pay more of this.
That's right.
And so I think if I'm going to stand up here, I have to support our employees and say, "This just doesn't sound like it would be something good for our employees." One day they may have to pay something. But at what cost? And I just didn't, we didn't realize until they came in and told me. We had no idea that when you selected your plans, that's what you got. And we didn't know that the county had selected two kind of plans. And that might be why we hear a lot of concern over why are they having to pay more?
Well, and too, Dr. Matthews, when we went into this plan, it was studied. I mean, we didn't just pick a plan. All these plans were studied very much. I mean, I did a lot of it myself, so I know we really had the best plan for the month.
One of the real problems is the control.
That's right.
Yeah.
And your employees don't have any control because they have nobody out looking for them, looking out for them in that process.
I just think there's so many of them, it would just be overpowering. And I really can't imagine the county wanting that to happen. Every time that I've gone before the board of supervisors, it's been, "Well, can we get on y'all's plans so our rates are lower?" But after we found this out, that, it's going to hurt both groups. It's not, you know, it's, I don't think it's just really worth it at all.
I think another thing that I found out that I didn't know was that we thought it's their small group, so what happens there is really affecting their premiums. But they're part of a larger group of small businesses, so it's not, it's just, you know, not instant there, it's what affects it.
It's not a good idea right now. In five years, the landscape might change and the constraints are different and we need to reevaluate it.
Well, maybe even if we're left with choices or something. But it's been good insurance for our employees and we don't really have a reason. And now that we know that our rates did not go up for next year, we'd be great.
I appreciate you doing research to make sure we know.
And they did a great job, thank you so much. I remember when Stacy used to get nervous and didn't want to get up in front of people, but she's so good at it, she should have to do it all the time.
Oh, no, she shouldn't.
The next is the Madison Agreement. And because the Madison Agreement is so much a part of our budget, I did want to mention that I've been doing some figures with the budget and based upon what the county gave us last year, we should be able to build a budget where we don't have to ask them for any increases, which would be a load off the county's mind. The Madison Agreement, since there's so many in the audience, I want to kind of give them an idea. We call it the Madison Agreement, but that's not truly the name of it. Ms. Johnson was one of the members that worked with this years ago. I think you did too, Mr. Mills. And it was an agreement with Madison County. Madison agreed, the school system, to let us use their composite index, which is much lower than ours, for some supplemental basic aid because we're so small. We're so very small, we have less than a thousand students. And there's some regulations under the Department of Education that says, if you're under a thousand students, then you can, or maybe eleven hundred, I can't remember exactly what it says. It's up there, it's eleven hundred. You can jump onto someone else's composite index for some supplemental basic aid. Basic aid is one of our funding mechanisms that comes. And last year was the first time that Mr. Honaker and I all agrees, Mr. Honaker, we went through the budget and our basic aid had jumped to one point one seven nine million. And we didn't have any supplemental basic aid showing. So we were really concerned and we put some phone calls in through DOE, to DOE, and we didn't receive answers back because they had a little hiccup with their computing system and sent out wrong checks to wrong counties and got that worked out. So about three or four weeks go by, we went ahead and signed this agreement with Madison. And basically, it's an agreement that we share some staffing, we share some classes. Madison gets the benefit by the shared staff, we get the benefit by the supplemental aid. So we've done this agreement all year long with Madison. And the board didn't want to, nor did I want to ever jeopardize that relationship because it was so hard to build in the beginning. No other surrounding system were to work with us. And what happened now is we're still, we've got, you know, Delegate Weber is fighting for us right now to get some supplemental basic aid. But it used to be about two hundred thousand dollars for us. At one point, I think it was two hundred forty or something. And so last year when we got none, we found out that the way the regulation was written through the legislative process was that once we hit one point one seven nine million in basic aid, we lost all supplemental aid. So we went to the budget year and had to make do with that loss of money. We were still able to give teachers an increase, which was wonderful thing to do. The governor was going to do a match thing for a certain small portion, that fell through. So we've made it and we've lived through all that. So we're trying again. There's a couple of changes to this agreement. And my understanding, Amy's talked to the secretary to Matt Everhard, and it was passed in Madison. But we asked for two changes, and I'm trying to see if I can see it better from a distance. It is the, the third bullet. It says, "Prior to putting surplus school buses and cars up for auction, Rabahannet will offer surplus buses and cars to Madison at no cost." It's always been in there that if we had a bus left over at the end of the year, we were going to get a new bus and we were going to discard that bus. The school board has to declare items like that that have been purchased as surplus. So once they did it, I would pick up the phone and call Mr. Everhard, Dr. Everhard, and say, "We've got a bus." And he would say, "Donna, it's junk, I don't want it." And that's typically what happened. And then there was a stage where you weren't supposed to sell buses like that, but he never wanted it anyway, and then they've gone back to, "Now you can." So we were talking and I told him, "I don't have cars right now because we have cars on this surplus list that the board asked me to do." And those are very, hopefully will go at an auction for very small amounts, where any of the bus drivers that may be interested in those. But he's very interested later when we get maybe possibly to the point of some of these vans that we might need to trade in and that sort of thing. So I put that in there as a caveat for him because we also had a Latin teacher running there. And our Latin classes are packed. We really need him here. And he's been going there and he's only had three children in Latin. And so when I told him that, I said, "We really need to keep our Latin teacher here." And he said, "Well, let me think about it, let me talk to the board." And we came back, so they are the two changes in this agreement if you were to compare last year's to this one. So they have agreed. We do have to sign it, whether we know we're going to get supplemental aid or not. It has to be signed and Amy needs to send it in to the Department of Ed. I'm thinking we may later, for November appropriation time, we may get a little bit of supplemental basic aid. But they're the only two changes that we have. What he and I both talked about though was at any time, well, our students can go back and forth to classes. You know, if they want to send, see, before we said specifically and then said, "Or you can call the superintendent and see if we'll take some children." Our class numbers are kind of low. So we totally don't mind it. You typically want to come into culinary. Sometimes they might want to do a building trades or welding or something like that. Right now, we don't have planned next year for students to go to Madison. But it's nice to have the option there if a student was really interested in something we don't offer for them to be able to go. Yes, Amy, you have a question?
The only thing, Dr. Matthews, that you've added cars, that's adding things because it was on the buses. But you got prior to putting surplus school buses and cars up auction, they'd be offered to me.
Right. Yeah, once you, once you declare them surplus and you decide for them to go to auction, they go to auction. So what would happen is your superintendent in the future, a year from now, might say, "I'm going to get rid of this van," or "I'd like for the school board to declare it surplus." And before y'all say, "Yes, Jimmy, go put an ad in the paper for this," we need to pick up the phone and call Madison and say, "Are you interested in this car?"
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. Now, the buses, it's fine, we couldn't get rid of them. But I'm not saying, I, I really'm not.
But we'd have to declare our surplus class.
That's right.
But they'd be surplus going to Madison. You would be told by the superintendent, Madison would like this car. So what you're looking at probably is Madison gets nothing out of this deal financially other than possibly a teacher or two, maybe doing a class or something, their children coming here. We have the opportunity to get fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars out of this. So declaring, and y'all know, when you declare something surplus, it is beyond, I doubt that he's ever going to want them, but it sounded good to him, so he said, "I'll tell you the option."
Well, the only thing I was thinking about like this year, though, this would be going to affect him so that year.
No, ma'am, this is next year's agreement. So this would have nothing to do with any of the cars that y'all asked me to get on the list for you.
Okay.
And he wouldn't want any of those cars. Anyway, he can't transport students in those cars.
The use of the composite.
World, speaker, I don't know, was it just US or was it around the world? Where are we going? That's, was it China or was it?
Oh, China, for the national and world.
Okay. So it was thirty-five hundred dollars to have them. So we built in our budget thirty-five hundred dollars and we paid that fee for them.
That's true.
I didn't offer that, and they must have forgot about it, but that's a whole lot to give out. Well, that's true. That's what they wanted last year, we got no supplemental. But I have a good feeling that by November appropriations, we may have a little bit of supplemental coming in.
Well, now, I don't have any problem with the cars and it starts July and it does start July.
It's next year. It would be this time next year that y'all would be deciding. You might have some cars or some buses that you're going to get rid of anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
And then they go.
I'm okay.
And this does have to be approved tonight before I can sign it. And what will happen is, since Dr. White is starting tomorrow, I'm going to come back into the division Thursday for just a short little watching. But I'll probably go ahead and sign it and then she can want to get it over there. We're waiting for the original one to come with their signature on it first.
Any other questions?
All right, so five point five is a list of the surplus cars. I'm not sure if the number beside it, Mr. Honaker, is the number of the car. Who is Mr. Honaker? Like, is twenty-six really car number twenty-six? So what it shows is the year of the car, the make, the model, and then the mileage that's on those cars. And as Mr. Mills said later, this doesn't come up until after. Public comment for you to approve this list. But the thought was, if you remember, that we would set a limit on this, like the bid would be accepted less than a hundred dollars. And it would be closed then. So when they open and they say, "I want to pay a hundred and fifty," and Amy says she'll pay one fifty-one, Amy gets the car. And then we go ahead and title them out and they would be off here. We wouldn't have the parts fee and all that stuff on these cars. All right, so everybody, there's no questions about the cars. I'm going to go to five point six. And I'm going to go over the, the, we really didn't know what to call it, the recognition of career records for student athletes. And what we were trying to do with this is come up with kind of a process that could be put in the athletic handbook so that parents and students would know what happens and how we calculate the points so that they could possibly win recognition. And we like to recognize them and have it on banners. For example, in basketball, if you get a thousand points, I think in volleyball, it's so many, what is it, Mike? So many sets or?
Kills.
Kills. I, you know, I didn't play that stuff, I'm sorry. So we were trying to find something that kind of let parents know, we really do have a process, we really do go through a process, and we do have a way of verifying this. The problem has come in when we have coaches moving in and out and the book, the actual record books get lost, and then we don't have records to go from. So I sent this to the board ahead of time and posted it on the website. And I also sent it to my administrative team and said, "What do you think you might possibly change in this?" And so we had, if you go back to the top, Robin, I had left off the word "by the referee." Or VHSL record books will be signed off by the referee. They are anyway. I actually thought that the coaches signed them too, so that shows how much I know about these books. So we do have that in there. So almost always, we have these. And Jimmy has told me, Mr. Swinler, when he was AD, if he didn't have a book and he had a student getting close to some records, he'd pick up the phone or he'd send an email out to another AD and say, "Can you check the records on this?" So there is another way to double-check these records. The other thing that we put in was, all points must be verified to count in the final calculation. Because this is the part that gets most parents concerned, is that, "Are we really verifying these counts? Or are we just going to say, 'Oh, I think they had whatever.'" One of the concerns that I had was, do you include, what's supposed to be included? Scrimmage games, conference games? So that we're all playing on the same field and you don't have a parent coming in saying, "My child didn't get recognized, but so-and-so's child did," and so forth. So I made some phone calls to some ADs that have got great reputations. Some that VHSL told me have been around for twenty years and said, "Why don't you give them a call and see what they do?" And I pretty much kind of base this upon what they do. It's always grades nine through twelve. It's always if they verify those records and they can, you know, if they were asked, they could prove that they verified them. They do count any school that is on the regular schedule that VHSL is letting play. They only count the number of games that VHSL in the regular season allows you to play, but we do that anyway. But they just don't count the scrimmage games. So we kind of came up with this and we thought if we have this, we could ask that it go into the athletic handbook. Mr. Swinler created one a few years ago, and I believe that Mr. Hurley is still using that athletic handbook. So it kind of lets you know that you may have more than a thousand for VHSL. So I kind of put it left so that as long as it's okay with the referee and whatever, we would go ahead and recognize it. And typically, we're giving them a basketball or a volleyball and congratulating them. But their scores, you know, the number of points they have or kills or whatever, doesn't go up in the gym till they're a senior and their season is finished. We need to try really hard to get it up if you're an end-of-the-year sport. Because if you're going to walk across that stage, it's kind of nice to see your name up there with something beside it. And so we'd like to continue doing that and I don't think that's going to be a problem. But I wanted to go before the board tonight, this is something that really takes place, not really by a vote. I hope we have a down years vote. This is really in-house, it's done from a superintendent's standpoint with their staff. But I did have Mike look at it, I had Jimmy look at it. I had the administration staff at the central office look at it. And y'all, and I've incorporated the changes that you said. I just think it lets parents know, we are being mindful of children and we're trying to promote them. So we're going to, unless there's some big major concern, we'll ask that this go ahead in the notebook. ahead in the, um, in the notebook. And Amy will always have it on board, Doc, so if anybody needs to go back, it will be saying that the board didn't know about this. Does anybody have any questions about that?
If, if, let's say a junior, uh, in void basketball gets a thousand points in the twelfth game, you're not going to wait till they're a senior to put their name.
We have it there. Not, well, when you put their name up, we're usually putting the points beside them. Now, sometimes, I think what we've done just here recently is we put the name up, but not the total points.
Right.
So I think that's just when he gets it up. We really recognize it if we can at night.
Right.
And give them the ball, and then they get their picture taken and that sort of stuff. So, I mean, I don't really want to say when they have to put it up, because what if you order the things or the banners down and being done? I don't want to put something like that in this. But I think everyone's intention is to recognize the students as quickly and as appropriately as possible. Because we're about recognizing students.
Exactly.
And that's what this should be about.
I agree.
Uh, the next thing, I do have a next thing. I don't have a next thing.
Next thing. Uh, the next thing is, uh, an update from our headboard rep. Moving on to, uh, is there any question for MBGS? Uh, moving on to public comment.
Virginia, Virginia gave a great presentation.
She's certainly doing it.
She's gone, but gone too.
Uh, moving on to public comment, if there's anybody who would like to address the board this evening, you would, uh, rise, state your name, uh, come to the podium, state the district you're from, et cetera. Who wants to go first, anyone?
Hi, my name is Dorit Navarro. Um, I'd like to speak on behalf of one of the bus drivers who's not able to come with us, uh, last minute tonight. Um, she'd like me to initiate the conversation about, um, possibly tabling the vote on the sale of this, um, of the cars. Uh, the reason being is that many of the drivers feel that it's important that there be more information on the cost-effectiveness of doing yourself, that, um, they'd like a conversation about, um, some of the reasons. I think there are several drivers here tonight who could be able to speak more to this, but I just wanted to initiate the conversation like she had asked. Um, but I know she said that there are several drivers now that park the bus at home and use some of these vehicles to transport drivers. We understand they, of course, can't transport their children, but the drivers do use them, and that it is, um, perhaps saving money because it's less mileage and gas on the buses. And I just wanted to open this conversation and see if that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
What, what district are you from? Uh, I'm not embarrassed to say that, I'm just saying. I'm not, I'm not embarrassed to say that, if you have them, we're simply not known. [laughter]
We, we assume that that's what you.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bynum, I'm from the Piedmont District, and there are three things I wanted to talk about today. First, I'm glad that the Rapunzel News has taken on reporting the public meetings. I appreciate that, that's wonderful. Just a year ago, our first public meeting was recorded in the school board, and it's been wonderful to me as a busy parent who has been one of the hundred or so people who watch each meeting, and I appreciate that. Glad that Rapunzel News is doing that. Um, the second that I'd like to talk about is, um, recognition of students. I'm really, I love seeing Virginia today. I love seeing all the talent that is here in the school. And, um, last, you know, I'm a parent of two elementary school children, and we had this past month the science fair at the elementary school. And, um, I don't know exactly what went on, but I had heard about it, that it was happening, and I was curious, I wanted to see all the students' science fair projects, and ended up calling the school the day after the judging had happened to be able to go in and see over a hundred science fair projects that were really interesting. And not just the dozen who are going on to the finals, and I'm proud that my son is going to go on to the, to the next level, but what I'd like to say is that I would love to see every student who's put a ton of work recognized. I don't want, I think Virginia gets, gets great recognition, and she deserves it, but I would love it if the school board next year would agree to come and see the kids' science fair projects, every kid's science fair project. They put a lot into it, and for a lot of these kids, it was their first time ever doing a science fair project. Now, the sixth graders have a new teacher this year, and it was a challenge, I think, maybe more than other years, getting them, getting those projects together. And I just have to say that this is about everybody, it's not just about the top, the high flyers, the thousand pointers, the, and it's about everybody. And I just really would love it if our school board would support the everyday kid, because that's, those are the kids who are going to give the depth, the feel to the high school and the recognition this school will get. And I do feel like that's been a little bit lacking. Like, when I started, when I moved here eighteen years ago, I was a science fair judge, I roamed around, and I, and I actually interviewed a lot of the kids. And it was a neat thing to see kids from all over the spectrum academically being proud of their work, and I'd love to see more of that happen in our schools. Um, I also want to thank you for soliciting public, um, advice about finding a new superintendent. I'm thrilled to see you as our interim, I've heard you speak, um, a few times at public meetings, and I just appreciate that, um, that you're willing to take this on, because it's so important to all of us. I'm just, my present, I have under three minutes, I was talking fast, but anyhow.
Thanks, Rachel.
Yeah.
Someone else?
My name is Tom Hendleton, I'm from Stonewall District, I'm a school bus driver. I've been driving for the county for fifteen years, thirteen as a full-time driver, drove as a substitute, drove from, uh, Aix-Deux-Rouge before that. I want to speak in defense of the bus drivers that are, were using cars to go back and forth in lieu of their buses to their houses. Um, when I drove bus twenty-one, not the smallest of the buses, but I called it the sport compact, um, it really beat up my yard. I had it there for several years. I wasn't reimbursed for gravel, I wasn't reimbursed for electricity plugging that bus in, in the wintertime. We were required to make sure our buses started in the winters if we were at home. Bus twenty-one had some issues, it has issues here in the yard in cold weather, but that wasn't our responsibility issue. What I'm getting at is, um, I think Dr. Chapel ran the numbers a few years ago of the wear and tear on the school bus versus the wear and tear on a piece of junk car that us bus drivers are getting to use. None of the cars can transport children. Mine, the heat worked occasionally, the air conditioning never, seatbelt didn't work on the passenger side, but it was transportation for me to get home in lieu of driving the school bus. My, my bus route started one mile from my house, so the deadhead miles on that bus was one mile every morning and one mile every afternoon. When it's parked here, the deadhead miles, or miles traveling with no children, is ten miles to that start. So there's nine additional mile, or not was, nine additional miles every day in the morning of wear and tear on the school bus that gets eight miles a gallon versus a car that gets around twenty. I think there needs to be taken into considerations for the bus drivers that are helping the county by parking their buses at home and reducing deadhead miles and having to pay their own yard maintenance for gravel or work. These cars, these buses packed down the driveways, or in my case, it was always in the way. No matter where I dedicated a place on my property to, it was always in the way. So every time I wanted to do something or have a family event at my house, I had to move the bus again. When it came time for me to, a couple of years ago, there was changing of some bus routes around here, and I have, I was going to have to upscale to a bigger bus. Bus twenty-one, I forget the actual number, but it was a handicap bus, so there was, there was no seats in the back on one side. I had as many as thirty-three kids in it, but normally it would hold about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three kids. I was going to upgrade to a bigger bus, uh, when they changed some routes, and there were some other factors, but one of them was I wanted nothing to do with having that bus in my yard. I wa, I didn't feel like I was going to be reimbursed for the wear and tear more on my yard having that bus there. So I opted to park it at the, the bus shop, and I traveled myself. I gave up my car on my own because of my own reasons. But the bus drivers that have been faithfully keeping their buses at home, making sure they start, and making sure that those buses have less wear and tear on them, I feel personally that they're being punished, and it's costing them more money to have a job, putting more money out for the school system that they're trying to support. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Mark, this is Rick. First of all, I'd like to thank you and Dr. Mathieu for, uh, for their efforts this year. We have, on the thirty-first year, and, uh, I think that's kind of a public thing. I've also supervised a lead-up for a few years, and I had a theory that, you know, that that was a problem, and dealt with the problem. I think these drivers can take it, if I have to get harsh with them, I'll get harsh with them. But also, I felt like as a leader or a supervisor, you had to kind of support the drivers also. And I've had a lot of drivers come to me with concern for them to sell these surplus cars. I agree with you a hundred percent. You got a car sitting here, it ain't worth a heap, they ought to go away from you. What I'd love to see, I'd like to see these drivers to be able to have at least four cars for coffee. One thing, most people come to work in the mornings, they work all day, they go home in the evenings. These drivers have to make four trips. Besides that, they would have to leave a bus here overnight, I mean, I'm sorry, have to leave a car here overnight, the ones that end up at their homes for rent. They leave one here overnight, and would you want your car sitting here overnight? I don't think so. Some of them don't have a one car. So on the weekend, they would have to get somebody to bring him Friday evening to pick that car up, so they could have their car for the weekend. So I'd really like to be able to probably give this in consideration. Our drivers, we got drivers here thirty years, twenty years, fifteen years, and they got good safety rates, they're good drivers. And I'm not afraid that I'm going to lose two or three of my drivers if their transportation took completely away from them. Like I said, I would likely really consider this, and maybe think about keeping a few cars for coffee, and yes, do really, I agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks for sharing, that was, it's good perspective. It's good to hear. Thanks for the feedback. Uh, moving on to our action items. Entertain a motion concerning the approval of the twenty seventeen eighteen calendar to adopt calendar B. Is there a motion? Sorry, a motion, Mr. Hoover, the secretary of the district. Both, is there any comments? All in favor of calendar B, I, I'd say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Mr. Water, is there a motion concerning the adoption of the Madison agreement as presented this evening? Mr. Hoover, the secretary of Johnson, is there any discussion? It's already been approved in Madison, this particular write-up.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, aye. Aye, opposed, no. Mr. Water, regarding, uh, the surplus cars for closed bid.
I would suggest we table it for further discussion.
There's been a motion to table, uh, item eight point three, uh, for further discussion, which would supersede any other motion. Is there a second to table that? No second, no second question, Roe. So that motion will be tabled following, to the next meeting. Is that, is that going to give us, uh, to do whatever needs to be done?
I would, uh, appreciate if some of you can make a comment, but put theirs down in Latin so that we know more or?
Just the pros and cons. Pros and cons, so, uh, perhaps, so, I'll, I'll repeat, yeah, I'll repeat.
Sorry.
I was thinking it probably could be yours. Uh, any, uh, could you take the point to make sure that pros and cons are captured, related to that, and the copy of that is, is given to, uh, Dr. Black? Be distributed. Thank you. So eight dot three is?
We could have a discussion now, but I think it would be better to have something right.
It's better to get all the data together. Moving on to, uh, nine dot one, is there any new business? I did have, I, I did have this thought.
Oh, I do, actually.
Do you have some? All right, let's go first.
It's, it's very important, but it's not new business.
Okay, well, if it's new business.
It's very important. It's life or death. It's, the Sperryville Fire Department, or Sperryville Rescue Squad is having a, uh, blood drive, March fourth. Uh, if you can give blood, time to go, ten to two. It's probably one of the better things that, that we do as a rescue squad in a, in a, uh, fire department.
Ten AM, two PM.
Ten AM, two PM, on March fourth.
Saturday.
And, and.
All right. So, uh, I can't, I can't, I'm not even, I've given lots of gallons, but I can't anymore because of the medicine I take. I can take it, I can get it. So, is there any other, is there any new business? All right, so you might be, you might be thinking, okay, well, um, we're, the school board has a task ahead of itself to find a new superintendent. One of the things that we do is we put together a calendar on how we're going to approach that thing. Prelimarily, some of the things that you would think we'd want to do is we'd want to listen to, uh, what are the people, uh, thinking that we should be looking for in our next superintendent, right? Ways to do that, which many people have already begun taking advantage of, is to send an email to school or member. Some are very well architected. Some, uh, people have already opted to start calling. I've gotten at least three phone calls already and a collection of emails, all with, you know, good content, helpful content. Robin has helped me put together a Survey Monkey instrument, which we could post on the school website as early as tomorrow. It's reasonable. There are hard copies of the same Survey Monkey, in case you don't, if you're not online, which could be made available at the school board office.
I'll do that in a moment.
Make some copies.
Could we put one to teach to the high school and elementary school?
Could distribute them to all the school buildings. I was also thinking at the next school board meeting, during public comment, uh, an opportunity for people to come and also share what attributes they desire in the next superintendent.
That, that would be before the board's presentation?
Yeah.
It's, well, historically, I, I've been through this before. Historically, we tried to have a public hearing just on that topic, and it was, uh, not helpful, it was not helpful at all. It was, I think, a waste of people's time to come out on a special night for such a thing, and I spent more time, uh, trying to keep the conversation, uh, professional than, than, so, so I found it fun to be a good idea. We have a lot of other mechanisms to start gathering this information. My goal would be that within three weeks, by the time we get to the next school board meeting, which is three weeks from today, that we will have accrued information from the public about what it is, what these attributes are that they, they find essential. And you just, you have to know that it's this person, the attributes of this person, they don't exist, first of all, but, you know, we will do our best within the means that we have. But it's important, the important thing that we gather, though, is prioritization of, um, what seems to be the most prevalent, the desired attributes. Okay, so when you're giving feedback to a board member, that's the kind of information that's most useful, right? A strength here, make sure there's a strength here, a strength there. So that type of information is most helpful. So Survey Monkey will be on the website, uh, the hard copies of the same survey will be available in, uh, all three of our school facilities. Email, phone calls, our information is all on the website, how to get hold of them and this. And, uh, if you care to come and speak at the next school board meeting, there'll be time to do that as well. So that's the beginning. We take that information, we have to create a, uh, We take that information, we have to create a, uh, a job description that we can then post, which has to sit out, I think, sixteen, so at least thirty days is the actual expected time, and that thing will sit out in public, and we will wait for all the responses to come in. At which time, then we will, so that, that, that takes us out into, but guess what? It's gonna be May before we're gonna be looking at resumes, if we stick to this aggressive schedule, so. You might say, that's not very aggressive, but we're also dealing with trying to get through one disciple at the same time, so, uh, it is aggressive. Also, uh, we, in the past, we, this board has hired people to help us get through this process. This board has paid BSBA a considerable amount of money to get through this process.
In the past.
In the past! Uh, this time, however, because Dr. Blair has a lot of experience in this area, and this board, I believe, has considerable experience in this area, we're going to do this ourselves. It'll save us ten grand.
Minimum.
Which, which you didn't really wanna spend on that anyway, did you? So we're gonna do our best to meet the legal requirements, not to mess up, and to try to make sure we're meeting expectations as best we can for what it is that this county can afford. So I wanted to get that out there because people are curious. There has to be kind of a broad schedule of expectations, and that's kind of where we're at. I can tell you one thing, we're not gonna be rushing, uh, because we'll rush into error. So, that's where we stand with that. And, um, are there any questions about that? I don't think I left any. There may be, any representative may choose to do something special in their own district. I can't control these guys. I don't know what they're gonna do. But our goal is to gather information, so just know that. Uh, we do, um, appreciate and thank Dr. Matthews for faithful service, for the concerned amount of time, uh, a lot of gray hair, I'm sure, that you tried to hide it.
Yeah, that was really dumb.
But the role of superintendent is not one to be coveted, actually. It's a tough job. Not one I would... Alright, any other new business? Anybody? Did we, did we get everything out quick? Uh, the next, uh, regular school board meeting is, uh, March, yeah, fourteen, March fourteenth, and, uh, six o'clock, we go into closed session. If it's open, we go immediately into closed session, it will not start before six-thirty, in case you wanna come and you don't wanna miss anything, we start at six-thirty, as close as we can. At this time, we're going to reconvene into closed session, and we'll take a small, a small recess while we, excuse you, when we come out of closed session, uh, I don't believe we have any motions at this point, we're strictly reviewing a personnel case, so there'll be no motions coming out of closed session. If you were here, you would just hear us come out of closed session, we would then certify only the things related to personnel matters to discuss, and then we will adjourn, if you cared to stay. I don't know how long.
Couple hours anyway, don't you think?
So thanks for coming, and we'll recess there.